This time I'd like to call the Joint Committee on Health and Emergency Services and the Committee on Budget Finance together. At this time, I would invite everyone to stand for the indication provided by Mr. Stuart Jones.
Mr. Jones, may the Lord be with you.
Good God, thank you for bringing us here today and helping us as we go forward to be respectful and to help each other in Lawrence County. Please be with all of our EMS, firefighters, law enforcement, and everyone who serves here in our county. In our heavenly Father's name, amen.
At this time, I invite the pledge allegiance, attention to the allegiance of the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as in the Constitution. May it succeed. At this time, according to the agenda, I would like to recognize Lawrence County EMS Director Chad Burrell and Administrator Ernie Seeger for a brief overview of issues related to Lawrence County EMS. At this time, Director Burrell.
That's me. Now, everyone, I'd like to first off thank you, committee members, as well as members of the council, for hearing this issue concerning EMS. This presentation will be very brief, and many of you will probably recognize from the initial committee presentation, very similar slides. We are focusing currently on our most recent need, which is attrition rate, and hopefully requesting a salary adjustment to decrease that attrition rate.
Let me add a couple things before we start getting on line. Let me make it clear, I'm the one that asked this committee, because we had about a month ago, we had five paramedics leave on the same day. And that certainly is something this committee has to be aware of. This is basically the same inflation we looked at back in September, I guess, when we had a very extensive overview of EMS. I also want to say that this has got nothing to do with privatization, it's got nothing to do with expansion, it's got nothing to do with any extra services that EMS might offer. The idea is to try to maintain what we have and try to maintain a full staff as best we can. I think by fact, I think we lost three lieutenants over a period of what, a couple weeks, I think, as local men. I think we're still five, the EMS is still five paramedics short, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And nobody likes trying to go in the middle of the budget year and get into this kind of stuff. The only pressure we have for this was still a couple years ago, that was Tomlinson, Trevor Wood, and others, Smad and others, to raise the pay small amount for correction options out of the tent. And the correction option is not paramedic, I'm not trying to point you to. But I do think that in that period of time we looked at, I think the attrition rate is about all and half, I think. So that's kind of what we're trying to look at and see what the work of the [inaudible]. I think Mr. Burrell has something to give to you, that end of the week.
Thanks, sir. In our prior committee meeting, we identified current needs and priorities of EMS, and those included additional resources, recruitment and retention, and fleet replacement program. As Mr. Seeger's mentioned, this is specifically for number two, recruitment and retention needs. Our employees are our most valuable assets. I don't know if everybody would agree with that in your organization you're affiliated with. Unfortunately, in 2014, our turnover rate was 43 percent. Main reason for loss and inability to recruit, higher compensation from other EMS agencies with less call volume per unit. Basically, other services are paid more to do less work. Since our last committee meeting, we lost three lieutenants and one ENT who had just tested for paramedic. Basically, that is four paramedics we lost in one day. And that stands since our last committee meeting. Our current openings, we have three paramedic field training officer positions, two paramedic positions, and we currently have two paramedics out of medical league. That equates 2.3 paramedics per shift that were short. Every day that we operate, we are 2.3 paramedics short, and we're having to fill them with part-time personnel and overtime. If the loss that we've experienced thus far continues, by the close of fiscal year '15, we will have experience with 52 percent attrition rate. Again, of the current needs, we identified the three, we're focusing on 2A, which is an increase in full-time salaries that require paramedic certification. We must have competitive compensation in order to attract qualified applicants as well as retaining quality employees. Every time we bring a new paramedic on board, there's onboarding costs, orientation costs. So every time we actually hire a paramedic and bring them on, Lawrence County is investing over $3,500 for that new employee. And that investment, of course, is hoping that they will be retained for the future here with us at Lawrence County. Administrative costs cost a little over $1,000. Each new paramedic, you have over $1,400 in just salary and payroll, and that's for 40 hours of office orientation and 72 hours of permanent overtime. That's necessary and needed to onboard individuals correctly up to our standards here at Lawrence County EMS. And then we also invest a little over $1,000 in uniforms, totaling over $3,500 every time we bring a new employee on. That's why it's very important for us to be able to retain these employees.
Chad, when you run one on like that, are they required to stay a certain period of time in Lawrence County?
Not just because of being a new hire. Once they are onboard, accident employee, if they take advantage of any kind of educational benefit where we support them through school, they are then required to stay a certain amount of time based upon the investment or the further investment that we put forward. We have educational leave benefit, where if their schedules work and they have a paramedic class to attend for four hours, they can attend that class. We pay them straight time, but they're under contract. Once they obtain their paramedic certification, they have to stay with us two years. It's another tool that we use to try to retain employees by giving them this educational benefit. As mentioned before, Lawrence County EMS currently starts our medics at $37,508. Here are some of our main competitors for labor. Greenwood County starts their medics off at over $40,000. Greenwood County starts at $39,222. Oconee Memorial at $39,000, it holds a rescue at $42,000 a year. Again, our current starting pay is $37,508. We also went ahead and compared counties' similar population density. Kershof County, they pay $3,587 more per year for paramedics. Lancaster is paying over $13,000 per year for their paramedics. Cherokee County, $4,300 more than we do for paramedics. And then Greenwood, which is our closest county, both geographically as well as population density, they pay over $1,700 more for paramedics. Initially, on the initial committee meeting, I had requested and recommended a six-and-a-half percent increase for all positions that require paramedic certifications. This includes paramedics, command officers, as well as administration. With a six-and-a-half percent across the board for all paramedic positions, with benefits totaled out at $96,000. Because of our recent turnover since the last committee, I am now asking that this committee consider an immediate request of $29,022. I feel this is the needed amount to basically maintain our staff and attract quality personnel for the remainder of fiscal year '16. What this would do is put a Band-Aid over Cleveland County. This would be a partial fund towards the six-and-a-half percent increase. And other discussions or other things within the other identified priorities, we'd have further discussions in other committee meetings, as well as possibly into the fiscal year '17 budget process. If the $29,000 is approved, this would allow us to increase our salaries to paramedic positions, field training officer positions, command officers, as well as our education coordinator position. And this would be a varying increase from three to five-and-a-half percent. I'll explain that more in just a few minutes. I actually will explain it right there. Here's a chart. This is listing our current positions. This is our current starting pay. This is the requested varying increase that I'm asking for, what that will equate to, as well as comparative salaries for Greenwood County EMS. Paramedics start $37,508, $509. I'm requesting a 5.5 increase, percent increase, will bring our starting salary to $39,572. And you can see it slightly above Greenwood County's current starting salary. Our field training officers, I'm requesting a 4 percent to bring them to $40,996. Greenwood currently starts their [inaudible] off of $41,183. For our lieutenant positions, I'm requesting a 3 percent increase, that will bring it to $43,053. Greenwood currently starts their lieutenants at $43,242. For the captain positions, I'm also requesting a 3 percent increase, bringing our starting to $46,056. Greenwood starts their captains out at $47,674. Again, the $29,022 is requested to carry us through the remainder of fiscal year '16. This is anticipating that if this is approved, becoming fully staffed, filling our positions by November 21st. If we do that, there's 14 pay periods remaining, and that's how we equate out the $29,000. If this varying percent increase of three to five-and-a-half percent was approved for an entire year, it would be $53,898, and that does include benefits.
Sorry, the clicker's giving me some problems here.
Again, as mentioned before, our employees are our greatest asset, and I feel that we need to do everything we can to retain and attract all of these prehospital basic care providers. Competitive compensation is just one piece of the puzzle in the overall identified needs and priorities of EMS. However, competitive compensation is needed to maintain our greatest assets, its employees. With that being said, here's the three priorities listed again with the pain and credit emphasis, and open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. This time, I'd like to recognize members of the Health and Emergency Services Committee. And I'll begin with Mr. Thompson, who is a little bit under the weather. But Mr. Thompson, do you have any comments or questions at this time? Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, and definitely competitive wages, you've got to have competitive wages. But I believe that in order to have those competitive wages, we've got to have competition. And while I know it said a moment ago we weren't going to talk about privatization, but I believe that if we had some competition and some ideas of what we would be looking at outside of county, that we might be able to have competitive wages in the county. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is Greenwood is a good comparison as far as population goes, but Greenwood's about 460 square miles, the county. So they've got a lot less area to deal with, same, about the same population, but less area overall to deal with. So Lawrence, we're taking from tax base, it's same size population, but about twice the size of this Greenwood County. So that's all we have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to recognize other members of the council who were present tonight. Mr. Nash serves on the Finance Committee, but I'd like to offer him the opportunity to ask any questions or comments.
I still, I've got one or two questions. Why did five leave on the same day, or was that strictly paid? Or was that personnel conflict? Or just what is the bottom of all of this? Well, I don't believe that everything is paid. And I understand Greenwood County, if they got to call a full-time EMS person in, they do not pay overtime, which we do, right? If you call back in a full-time person.
Anything over 40 hours, they pay time and a half as well.
They get, they pay time and a half, but Greenwood County does not, right?
Yes, sir, they do.
They don't. I've been told both ways, so, which is true.
They do pay overtime, anything over 40 for the EMS director, and Danny Parker's also been in touch with the human resources director there as well, that can confirm that.
They do pay overtime for full-time employees, but they do not pay their part-time people overtime.
That's what I was talking about, what she's saying, they don't pay part-time.
Part-time personnel.
Overtime.
We, we try to.
You could be a full-time at Lawrence, and go to Greenwood and work part-time, and you don't get nothing extra, you get a regular pay, right?
Yes, sir.
Is it the same apples and apples, or not?
If they work less than 40 hours, yes, sir. We try to limit part-time employees from working over 40 hours, but occasionally, because of our openings, we will have to get them in overtime. We have restrictions in place to minimize that, but there are rare occasions that we have to do that.
What's the hourly rate for individuals?
Do you have the hourly rate? All I have is the salary.
That's all right. I mean, that could play a role into it too, if their hourly rate hired out, and they might be. What was our hourly rate for our overtime?
For full-time personnel?
Oh, part-time.
Part-time personnel, is it $15 an hour? So time and a half add, they were in the over 40 hours. But again, we try to limit that. We have policies in place and scheduling practices in place to minimize that. However, it happens sometimes.
This county got a lot of support several years ago about overtime for our EMS employees, and I'm satisfied what we're doing now is the correct way to do it. You can't work a person overtime and not pay them overtime, whether they in Greenwood or Lawrence, wherever they are.
Any further questions, Mr. Nash, at this time?
Will. I've done a ton of different things, and I don't know really what to believe the facts and picture. I hope we can get it all worked out.
This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Garrett Daniel. Mr. Daniel, do you have any questions or comments? And certainly recognize our county chairman, Mr. Joe Wood, at this time.
Well, the last five, six years, we had meetings about, I know Ernie didn't mention this, about the detention center. And I was on that committee, and we had numerous meetings about retaining health at the detention center. Well, finally, last year, or year before last, can't remember exactly how long ago it was, we stepped up and raised salaries as detention officers, and we don't have any problem hardly whatsoever at the detention center in retaining health. They are fully staffed. This is not the first time Chad Burrell has been forward counsel and asked with this problem. And I feel like I could have brought my attention, now it's time to do something about it. We need, 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 and not do something about it, we're not accomplishing anything. We've got to do something about it, trying to maintain this health. At least, at least getting it equal or maybe a little above what other people are paying. I mean, we're not, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. And we need to step up and do it, and then when budget time comes, at the end of the next six-month period, we're going to have to step up and figure out a way to pay more.
I have a few comments that I'd like to add. I'm not sure, the $29,000 and some odd dollars, that's only for partial year, is that correct?
Yes, sir. 14 pay periods starting November 21st, coming up for this year '16.
And you are requesting that $29,022 for this year only?
That is what I'm requesting to carry forth, to finish out this, this year. Would be, to finish this, this year until we get to the next budget process, or further discussions with the committee about other needs and figuring out ways to pay for additional revenue sources. Just because of our recent turnover, I'm really approaching this committee with this main request of a varying increase of seven to six-and-a-half percent across the board. In order to do the varying increase, it would mean $29,000, which does include benefits, to carry the remainder of this fiscal year. And then other discussions, of course, coming up into the next budget process for any additional increases or continuation of that. Basically, this request is to put a Band-Aid on Cleveland County to stop attrition, and hopefully attract people to fill out the positions.
A stopgap measure, so to speak.
If you would, yes, sir.
And to be, reoccurring cost would be the $54,000.
If the same varying increase, three to five-and-a-half percent, was to be approved and carried forth in the next fiscal year, it would be $53,898, fully staffed with benefits.
I ask Ms. Parker, our Human Resources Director, for the list of employees who have left our employment. A few have returned, is that correct, Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir, not many.
Not many. Many of whom, a total of 35 employees, that includes both part-time and full-time, from January 2014 to September the 30th of 2015. So that's 1.75 years. That's not just one year. We do not conduct exit interviews with employees who leave our employment, is that correct, Ms. Parker?
That's correct, I understand your question.
We do internal verbal exit interview, you know, the formal two XR. We always try to figure out how to be heard and efficient.
I would, Mr. Seeger's, like to recommend, I assume it would be a council decision, that we conduct exit interviews with any employee who leaves the EMS, to try to determine exactly where they're going and why they're going. I'm not asking to go back and do those 35 employees. But I would like Human Resources Department to conduct that. That will come, that must come from the entire council, I do believe. That's just.
That's a policy we can do at our [inaudible]. I think, I've been around this a long time, and I do know that they talk about where they're going and why, and we can formalize that, and we can put it in writing, and we can make copy available. But I think that in talking to Burrell over the last several years, I think to some extent he already does that. And we can sort of formalize it, put it in a kind of policy, and trip them, that's a very good idea, we should do that.
I do concur with Mr. Nash, that I believe, based on my work experience, regardless of the profession, that pay is not the only deciding factor in whether an employee stays or goes. And I will concur with that.
I realize that.
With what Mr. Nash has said. I also believe and recognize that we have an immediate need to provide the necessary services to the citizens of Lawrence County, just as our chairman stated. There is an obvious need within the department. I also believe that it's time that we begin to examine third-party providers. I believe you're using some now, is that correct, Mr. Burrell?
Do provide a grant, yes, sir.
Okay. How often are you using third-party providers as a stopgap measure for these openings?
We have not used any recently, just overflow calls. Most recent issue where we use a third-party provider almost daily is because of our fleet issues. We have not used a third-party provider, to my knowledge, recently, just for that stopgap, not because solely due to staffing.
Do you think that may be a possibility?
Use a third-party in lieu of.
In lieu of overtime.
I'd like to repeat, Mr. Thompson, what he said, in lieu of overtime.
I think that if you research it further by using a third-party provider, you will also decrease the revenue that this county generates, which will maintain the same resources with less revenue.
With all due respect, Mr. Burrell, I believe we have an $800,000 write-off in the EMS department's hand, is that correct?
$800,000 write-off as far as collections?
Correct.
I'm not 100% sure of that figure. I'd be back if you confirmed that, I'll add those numbers.
Is that correct, Mr. Seeger?
I may have that information.
From our number of 2014 till September of 2015, our gross charges were almost 5.1 million. We wrote off of the contractual 1.3 million, which led us with net charges of 3.8. Out of that, we received 1.7. We wrote off 1.2. Issued 25,000 refund, I mean, 2,500 refunds, with an AR of $894,000 at the end of September.
So clearly, this county is going south in a hurry in terms of revenue and expenses. And while we're not in the money-making business, we should be revenue-neutral, or at least approaching that.
Well, hang on one second. Isn't part of that related to Medicare, 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 are those actual charges relative to, is that what they would pay, or is that what was billed on Medicare, Medicare side?
Yes, what I just gave was what we bill, what we have to write off, and then what our net is that we're supposed to relate after that.
I would like to suffice it to say that I think it's time that this county consider what you've said for the stopgap measure. I also believe that it's time that we consider a third-party provider request for proposals. That's not coming in the form of a motion. I'm just speaking as one member of the committee. At this time, I have no further comments as a member of the committee. I would like to recognize Mr. Seeger for the potential funding sources for the proposed salary adjustments. This time, Mr. Seeger can administer it.
Mr. Chairman, the current source of that is the county's unattached fund balance. And let me address that for a few minutes. I was meeting yesterday in Greenwood, we dealt some legislature [inaudible]. And that billion-dollar year we're losing through the Hope Governor Fund is set in stone. It's not coming back. That has resulted in our, and Ms. Parker, this currently addresses better, I can, but that has resulted in a steady drain on fund balance of the county. Two years ago, we had $10 million or so. Three years ago, we had $10 million or so, and now we're down to six or seven to that [inaudible].
That's before we hit $5,000, $3,000, $1,500.
Yeah, the council has passed here, about $7,000 in reserves, about the budget, and we'd like to go over that again this year. So a steady decline in revenue resources for this. We have reduced our fund balance considerably, with no pay increase for employees, no new services, no new employees. Basically, what, you know, we're getting deep alive is the only benefits, no health insurance, and that sort of thing. I think the only thing that we can, and that 388, which you all know, has frozen new building, anybody, any locality, school districts, any locality in the state, to be able to increase funding for anything outside of an absolute [inaudible]. The only thing we have, I think, at the county's disposal, and this will be next spring, it's too late for anything like that, would be some sort of fee that was discussed a couple years ago, 15,000 dollars was talked about, I think that would generate approximately $1,600,000 a year, which wouldn't, you know, it would go ways toward paying this. But the, we're basically spending everything we had, the 60-year reserve that we set up years ago, trying to get us back into the black, and it did, it did for a period of time. That's budget completely. And I just don't see how we can continue without some infusion of some different funds in some way. Now, you know, counties and general assembly and everything, they're basically limited, you know, the ways that can be done. You know, there are things like business licenses that can be charged earlier if we don't do that. I think that would be, I'm not suggesting that, I mean, that's what some places do. But I think our audit this year is going to show a decrease in that, in that fund balance. That impacts our ability to borrow money, our ability to issue bonds, our ability, you know, the county's ability to do a lot. that, and some of us are around here, I think, as I said, she may, she may be the only one who's around today, and we, you know, we're doing just finance, and nobody wants that. So, I think, uh, you know, and if, if we get to a point, and we're not there yet, if we get to a point where the services and the expenses have got the best income, and that's going to be for all that, that's, that's going to be over now, you know, probably basically over some of that, but we've still got fifty-plus EMS employees that, that, that are there, you know, and serving all of the county in, in, in various ways. So I think right now, this is a stopgap, as the chairman said, but I think going to come spring, the only thing that I see is some sort of, sort of fee that would be attached to, attached to those, you know, in some way, I think, we talked about fifteen dollars a couple of years ago, that didn't pass, lottery, uh, you know, about thirty thousand or so, uh, pieces of property in the end, uh, of, of, of real property, instead of saying, oh, we'll close any like that, it is, it is being a real property, thousands of things, you know, bits of that sort of, and I think that's the only option we've got right now, we, we can continue to look at that, and a process to start, but soon after, after the first year, and, you know, and we will, we will, we will, we will see what we can talk, but it is fairly dramatic, what's happened to our, our fund balance for the last several years, and again, that, uh, we added, the county, they added new programs, employees, that anything about pay adjustment, probably a lot worse than this, so, I think at this point, uh, when we've got, I'll always be back when, when it's the last month or so, so, so we're not for sure, you know, we have a part of fund balances, but right now, the only thing we have is that, 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 uh, appropriate fund balance, and, uh, so that's, that's where I recommend, if you decide differently, that's why I recommend a fund, fund balance account right now.
Thank you, Mr. Seagulls, this time, under item seven on the agenda, committee discussion, question, answer session, we'll go through that again, uh, recognize, Mr. Thompson.
How much, how much overtime would we slay, if we, if we take them away, people? If we were, we were a hundred percent?
Mr. Thompson, I don't have- Apparently, built-in overtime is, is about a five-hundred thousand, that's just normal salary, that should not be considered overtime, because it's not an excess. I think that best-case scenario would possibly be under fifty-two-hundred thousand dollars, so you resort back to normal salaries versus this one.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, you pay a little bit, I thought, uh, and, and, you mentioned the less first, uh, and we, we, we use third-party provider to do that, we decided a long time ago, to have people come in and write checks, you know, we'll do them on our candidates, that'd be more, we went down to twenty-five, thirty-four percent, I think now, we're in forty, we're sort of, close to where we were, we got higher than that one time, I think, the debt side side, maybe up to sixty percent or so, what, we do not do, uh, aggressive licensing, you know, we don't sign anybody's property, we don't, we, we do debt side side, that's strictly an income tax-based, uh, based process, hospitals do that, you know, and I think, I think, like her, rather, they send a letter, maybe, and then, uh, and try to do some things, they don't do, they don't, they don't tax property, they don't, they don't issue, uh, issue, uh, judgments, that sort of thing, so, I think the downside of that would be, uh, a great undrive for public, if they give a bill to the county or, you know, a license agency, you, you pay a survival value, the other part of that is, is the type of service that they do on the license side, and it is, you know, most of what they do is emergency stuff, and they, they've got issues with, with bad residence, bad, uh, social security numbers, things, you know, things to believe in that, and, uh, I think if you remember, Mr. Thompson, we, Mr. Burrell's, uh, something like fifty-eight percent of our, of our, uh, total US fleet, I think comes from click, I believe I, I don't have the numbers we had last time we all met, I said, uh, we are perfectly willing to try to bump that number up, uh, you know, through a third-party, or through a license agency, or whatever we need to do, I, you know, I'd get right, I'll be in half a year or whatever it was, is, is problematic, but again, you know, you all know the, the issues this county, folks who are out of work, or under the law, or elderly, or whatever, and it's something we have not done, and a lot of those numbers get back to that, it's something either can't pay or won't pay, and I'm not, I'm not trying to do it anyway, and I know that, I have people playing big about, you know, sitting around, EMS, well, going to downtown hours for hospitals, you know, if you roll that vehicle, you got a medic waiting, we've got a lot of that involved, that may be something that's been a little concerning, you know, it's certainly a bit, it's not, but the lowback would be probably, probably concerning, but, all of that, that's something we, I, I think our, if I had to characterize, what we do now is, is, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a system, works okay, it's not designed, though, and we don't, we don't use all the weapons that could be used for, you know, for calculation, it's only good, and that, that's, that's a policy question that, that, that this full council, this committee would have to consider and take a look at, uh, that, aside, the fee I mentioned, I think, you know, about all, you know, about the only option we have, and we're up ten, twelve thousand calls a year now, and something, something, we're learning something out of there, so, I think what EMS has done over the years, and I've been around, I've been, I've been around, up here at the start of the century, since, it's got to be something that people depend on, you know, it's not, it's not exciting anymore, you know, people call the ambulance, cause indeed, uh, and, and, you know, and there, and there are hundreds of examples here, that I've, I've heard over the years, people that, you know, we do search, so, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, you know, that is an option, I apologize, I'm not, I'm not thinking about the four, but it's a payment option, and I'm just, it's all that worth of work.
Under other committee members' comments, questions, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Um, Mr. Seagulls, one thing I was thinking about there, um, do we garnish taxes for-
We do, we do. But we know, but that's, even that, you know, you have to, uh, it's a series of letters, I think, that you send to them, and they, you have to have a right social security number, they have to have a, I don't know if we'd let them add that, it's not like-
We collect annually about sixty, maybe sixty thousand dollars, and we just got through sending, set off debt, letters out to individuals, warning them that unless they came back with a legitimate reason for us not to take their income taxes, then that, that would be sent, set off debt, we sent seventeen-hundred-and-forty-eight letters.
So, but we don't garnish, we don't do that, that's pretty damn bad, uh, and that's been going on for ten, twelve years now, I guess, we, as I, when we first started, you know, back in, then we were doing a gold mine, I mean, it was, you know, a couple of thousand dollars at a time, it's, it's, it's a drop, and that's, uh, you know, that's a small portion of the whole people there.
And that's, that's part of the problem there, you know, the cost of everything keeps going up, and people are paying more for, for everything these days, so the fund balance, you know, will continue to diminish, um, I would look at, uh, Mr. Director Burrell's options here as abandoned, and, you know, I, I'm thinking, eventually, we'll have to really address these issues, I mean, eventually, I think we're going to have to have somebody thinking outside the box, helping to lower the cost, helping to, to find those cost savings, so we can implement that EMD system, which may be helped with thirteen thousand calls per year, um, and, you know, going back to the slide there about the, the cost of, of transport, you know, and looking at Anderson County, who has privatized most of their service, they've actually lowered the costs.
Didn't, didn't you have some invite on that about their, about those-
Some, some of the costs there, and I'm not sure what, what they're comparing there, um, and we're talking about private services, it does include both the non-emergent transports, our cost is also including a lot of out-of-county transports, where there's higher mileage, and you have an increased charge, and that's their averages, uh, when Newstown seven called me about those numbers, uh, the question they made that clear as well is we have higher loaded miles than most of these other organizations, that would reflect a higher per-charge strip from animals.
Right, well, yeah, what I was showing by showing that, you know, it just, the cost of, I mean, you've got Sparkville County, which is public, Greenville County, which is public, Anderson County, which has done a lot of privatization, Lawrence County is, has our agreement, our network provider agreement, which we're using, you know, um, kind of as needed right now, but it sounds like with the, we're getting our fleets back, but we've still got the lack of personnel, you know, so it sounds like we could utilize, um, those private services more this time, but basically what I was showing there is, actually, if we want to lower the cost of medical expenses, of EMS, of transport, um, and those cost savings, you know, I mean, going back to our deficit, to our reserve spending, I mean, eventually, that money is, is going to run out, and we're going to have to figure something out.
You keep in mind, too, you know, the Green, Sparkville, go that way to follow, so, you know, we don't, you know, that, that, I think, I think that's, I just can see how many out, how many out, kind of transport we make, and the other side of that is, we've talked about that, about, I mean, we've had this issue for years, you know, take New Greenville, take New Greenville, take New Sparkville, take New, you know, take, take your own, you know, and, and, and that's a constant issue with these folks, for, uh, and I think it speaks to you, to your point about the equal service, I agree with that, but, but I think the force of the fact is, well, that, that we're trying, they are trying mightily to serve the public, you know, with what the public wants, a lot of people are at, like in Lawrence, you know, and I think that, uh, you know, and I, I know there are times in all, in all IPs, like, you know, that's when, that's when, that's when these third-party folks come in and, and pick up a lot, so, I see your point, but I think, you know, and I'm not knocking Lawrence Hospital, they did, they, you know, they, they do their job, certain things they just can't do it.
Right, and I see your point, too, Mr. Seagulls, um, ultimately, and I think, I mean, it could be a mandate fix, you know, that's one thing, I'm just looking at the long-term, how to stop, because government, you know, you were talking about the local government fund, and all these different, um, expenses, you know, that keep getting higher and higher, and all the money's coming out of the tax, from the taxpayers, and what are we going to do to reduce that, you know, what are we going to do to reduce that expense at some point, so?
Another one of that, they have, they have, our expenses are going up at the same time when short, you know, short-term effect, laying people off, or doing the rest, or doing, or, you know, or doing other things that, that, that we haven't had to do yet, you know, when the state, I mean, I, I, that's a whole nother, I'm pulling a hard, but that's one million dollars a year or so, eight-hundred million dollars a year lost last, uh, if you look at what we go, we go to the, to the general, to the, uh, called surplus, the reserves are, it's not quite all of that, but, you know, but, 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 but this is part, and they, and the general center's going to do nothing, they're going to, they have to do that.
So we got to do something.
Well, uh, we do, but, I mean, but, you know, but again, if we're going to match revenue services, then we got to start cutting, and, and that's, 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 that's the outcome of that.
And I, I mean, I, you know, at some point, I'd like to see proposals, I'd like to see some ideas come in from the private services, you know, to, um, to maybe help where we didn't have to let people have, you know, maybe we could work out one of those things.
Again, I, I said, when we, when we started talking, about a year and a half ago, you know, we're not closing that, but, 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 I think, you know, we, we have not added another, uh, uh, full vehicle, which is counting, almost thirty, you know, and, and, and our population has grown significantly, you know, it's, it's, it went through the roof, but, you know, if you got a call, and if you're in Lawrence, you got, you got a call, I'm like Greenwood, you look at a thirty mile unit, and that's, I think that's where the, you know, if, if we have a small, eh, in Shrek County, I'm not saying that, but, but, you know, we, the point about Greenwood, we'll take it, you know, they're, they're serving about, about half what, what Lawrence County does, but those, those kinds of things we had, I agree with you on that part.
Okay, this time, um, I will entertain a motion from committee members regarding-
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Garrett Martin, I was going to tell you, if you, if we were sitting here, and, I know we've had problems with ambulances running lately, we've got ambulances of two, three-hundred thousand miles on it, and we, we can get that better, we can box two ambulances, we can get that better, if we were sitting here fully staffed, if we was paying competitive wages for various counties, we wouldn't be having this, and we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't have a problem, we've got people out here on social media, that gets on Facebook or social media, or whatever it is, and, and tries to act like they're God's gift to our EMS service, they in business to make money, and the more money they make, the less money we're going to have in this county to pay for our EMS service, we talked about reducing charges, if you reduce your charges, you're going to reduce your income, and going back to your statement a little while ago about first-party, second-party, and third-party proposal, what is a second party? Is a first-party our EMS system, is that what we're talking about?
I think I said a third-party provider, which is a private provider who would provide a proposal to whomever this full council to-
What kind of proposal we talking about, I mean, we can sit here all day and talk about, we can pull anything out of the hat, but that don't get anything done, that don't, that don't solve the problem, I mean, we can sit here and talk about things for two or three hours, just pulling stuff out of the hat, but that don't solve the problem.
Well, my, my, my opinion is, and this is my opinion, um, is that we would look at proposals for providing that fifth medic, unit and personnel, so that the county would not be funding that, that's just, that's me speaking.
The only way that you don't have a fifth-party proposal, what county gets into, the county has to pay all the extra stuff, the benefits and so forth, where you, you private party don't do that, and if a private party takes an oath and just leave the county, all they're going to do is pick up the phone, tell, tell, tell county council, kiss my ass, I'm gone. I mean, dead wrong, young buddy.
Well, and, you know, I, I will tell you that some of my concerns are legal issues, which is one you're referencing, and the care for the injured, you know, those, those two things, in my mind, hinge upon whether we can pursue this, but I do believe that other counties have pursued that, is that correct, Mr. Burrell?
Pursue third-party providers. Other counties in South County have, uh, they're fully contracted, and also do current public-private style mixes, which you wrapped here, is the right of the others.
I sit here, I probably shouldn't say this, but I sit here and I see our EMS director before us pleading his case, and I look out in the audience, and I see confederate, people trying to take business away from Lawrence County EMS, I just snicker, I mean, what's going on, I mean, we, we should be supporting this man right here, this man right here, we, we should put every piece of our trust in this man right here, and he has come to us several times and asked us about these wages, and just like I said, if we had competitive wages, and we were fully staffed, and had all our ambulances running, we wouldn't have a problem, except in the western part of the county where we want to put the fifth ambulance on.
Right.
But putting that fifth ambulance on, got nothing whatsoever to do with what we're trying to do now, and straighten our EMS system out.
And I, I believe, Mr. Wood, that, well, I can't speak for the other committee members, but I know that I'm, I'm in support of a stopgap measure, um, I can't speak for Mr. Jones, or Mr. Thompson, but, um, that's where I am.
What, what do you mean by stopgap measure, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just asking, I don't know, but, you know, I, I don't know.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars that Mr. Burrell is requesting for this year, um, that it would be one-time money, not reoccurring cost, and that the full council would examine it during the budgeting process.
And another thing, I'm going to back up, this past year, and I brought this count to attention many times, and I just, I kind of, everybody just turned their back and looked the other way, we had one employee in this county that got almost, got raised almost as much as what Mr. Burrell was asking us for right now, a one-time raise, and a lot of people on this count turned, turned their head, looked the other way, that was a lot, but it's not all right for him to come over and ask for raises for thirty-five, forty people?
I'm, I'm not saying it's not appropriate for him to ask for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may say one thing-
If somebody's got some kind of third-party proposal that they want to put on its table to fix our EMS system, let's hear it, let's quick- Let's quit talking about it, let's hear it.
I think that's what I'm saying, Mr. Wood.
We, and, yes, sir, Chairman Wood and Chairman Pitts, we have to request those proposals. But there's something, and I think we're all on the same page here, we're trying to figure out how we pay for this stuff. That's the ultimate goal, because we can say, I'm fine, too, with doing a stopgap that would take care of the problem for now and mandate it, but in the long term, are we just gonna keep running out of money until the county goes broke, and then nobody's gonna have a job? Then the medics, the paramedics are gonna be out of work, Director Burrell's gonna be out of work, everybody's gonna, so I think we need to think outside the box, we need to consider some outside options that have worked in other places, I mean, in the long run, so.
We thought outside the box, when we had a problem with the intention, son, we thought we, we went three years and wouldn't think outside the box. We finally thought outside the box, gave those employees a little bit of raise, and we cured that problem right there. That's thinking outside the box. We gotta think outside the box now and cure this problem, and then we'll, we'll take care of, we'll find money.
County's gonna break it.
Okay, this time I'd like to recognize Mr. Daniel.
I need just one question from Mr. Burrell about the, excuse me, built-in overtime for employees now. Was that a prior, was that something, an idea you thought of while, during your tenure? Or is that, is that always been in place?
That's always been, been in place. Before, it's my understanding, prior to my tenure, the county did not vote, kind of have it before you.
Oh. The lawsuit. Years ago, so, the server payment, we use something called Flex, and pay EMS employee on the same rate, on the same schedule that you pay fire. And we had that, that was approved and put that in place. And the idea was, every time the fire call, the EMS front, and then the medical calls, so far outstripped those sorts of calls, we're gonna, fire, we had a, we had to go, we had to, we got sued over the base, and had settled about a hundred thousand dollars back, that was, that's still our money, right now, it was, but the series were, and we, we went time and a half after everything was poured, and that, that was, and I think the eight-hundred-and-so hours that they, that they collect now is built in on the twenty-four, forty-eight work schedule, they're all twenty-four, all forty-eight, so every other week, that will work more than forty hours, I guess, which is worth a mountain, is, and we actually had, Labor Department came in, and they, Mr. Kipper was here, I saw y'all go talk to Kipper years ago, and they went through time sheets, they spent, they spent a month down here going through this stuff, and it turned out that the system we'd be using at that time, except that, under their, based on the call, yeah, the license been down, and got sued in Greenwood County, we all, all got sued at the same time. So rather than going through, the license lost, they had, they had to do time and a half, so rather than going through the lawsuit, paying those expenses, county council at that time decided, just scrap the system, add appropriate hundred thousand dollars in basically the same source we're talking about this, this part, paying those people overtime based on a little hour of work, and then we went time and a half after that was poured, and that's been in place for fifteen, fifteen years now, so, I think it, 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 it's pretty huge, so I mean, to go back ten years, that's how we got where we are.
My question, follow-up question on it was, was that part of a retention plan?
No, that, that was part of trying to fly.
I was trying to see if we tried to fix this before, and we're still in the same issue.
Yeah, at, at, at one time, back in, when I started this bit, back, back in the eighties, public employees didn't qualify over time, you know, you, you were forty, forty hours a week, a hundred hours a week, and then, uh, it was a Supreme Court case, the police and fire, you know, you know, didn't qualify over time, so that, 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 that's how we got where we are.
Mr. Pitts.
Yes, Mr. Man.
I live in a different area of Lawrence County than this area down here. Orange and Clum have lost five percent of the population, according to record. We have gained probably more than that. We have more people living up there, so when we get into budget, I know that's never a thing, we're gonna tax that in with county, and then you do this in, you know, because you don't have the people to get the money out of it, so you're gonna wake it up out of that area. But we wanna have a finer service, and it would make more sense when EMS picks up somebody our way to go to Hillcrest, which is where the hospital is, and to have one down here, so they can go up there, the transport, go to Greenwood from that hospital if they want to, but EMS here will be through them. And we have thousands of people working up there in those plants, and they need faster points. Now, if the great court EMS station, when you have a real problem, if we have a disaster, it would rid of the car, and you're gonna carry them to Hillcrest or wherever you can get them in a case like that, and you use whatever backup you have from EMS. So we had some backup, I'm personally in favor of the twenty-nine thousand, eight, twenty-two, or thirty thousand finished out this year, and that's gold for bear, but, you know, I think our EMS has a great job, but we still gotta think smart, too. Our people are already paying the taxes to death, cattle line, or the water line, or sewer line, for the industrial development there, and then we chop that money all up or something, so, some here or some there, and the county don't get a heck of a lot out of that, they get the first cut on the fee of the taxes. But we did, there's some old folks thinking or something, you just can't keep the rate payers, or if you raise taxes on businesses in Lawrence County down here, you only gonna hurt, now, basically lose taxes, and it's not gonna hurt up there, because if, say, great order up, they gonna run to Greenwood, because they got, oh, fancy stores to go to. So we gotta look out for versus, this part is getting more so than we do necessarily up there, which we gotta do it fairly to the whole county. And I've been on this council for a good while, probably over a year or two, building up. But we did, the bottom line is taxpayer rate payer is gonna pay it all, so do a good job with EMS for the rest of the year, and really get things like you out today, so Mr. Burrell can hire people and depend on them to be there. If we can finish out the year with thirty thousand dollars, that's all we do.
Would you mind if I said anything else? Okay, I would like to offer a motion to the committee that the committee, upon approval, and as a recommendation to full council, that we approve the expenditure of thirty thousand dollars from the unencumbered fund balance fiscal year sixteen to be used as described as following. I did not bring my reading glasses, but a three percent increase to captain positions, three percent increase to lieutenant positions, four percent increase to field training option paramedic positions, and five point five percent increase to paramedic position. And the effective date will be given upon approval of the full council, and that is for one-time money, not reoccurring cost, is for the remainder of FY sixteen fiscal year. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second. I'll, I'll go to the other.
Correct, I gotta have a second from committee members. Second from Mr. Thompson, all in favor, raise your right hand. Decision passed unanimously through to that one.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more. This likely required adjustment, which require, which would require sometime to do that, and a more effective date might be either January the first or sometime in December, you know, maybe through the whole, please, would you, that would, do you agree to that?
Yes, sir, my understanding it would require the whole...
Well, that's three readings.
...understanding, three readings.
So that number may come down a little bit sometime, I'd get, get first reading on the next week, or, or, or seven, or that day, it's on the plan, I mean, one time, I think in, in December, November, by the work done, you know, we all talk about that.
Would you please ask our county attorney if, if there is a way, there is such a thing as emergency procurement, this is not procuring, but in a way it is, would you please ask to see if this would follow under emergency procurement, and, and we could do it on one reading?
No, which, I think we do it on one reading.
I don't think anybody's...
But, 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 we all, one thing, you know, you, you don't have to, if council is willing, you can't have two readings one, one time. If the council is willing to meet for five minutes, you know, maybe later in the week or something like that, then you get second reading, and then you get advertised, you can, you can, you can press.
And, and it is allowable to have people come into those meetings, correct?
No, sir. I mean, you have to have four, I mean, if you get four numbers, you can do it that way.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll have an answer, that's what I have to do.
That, that decision will go to the full council for their consideration at the next meeting. Hearing no further comments, this meeting is adjourned.